So, welcome to the September 4th meeting of the South Hampton Village Planning Commission. So, at our last meeting, I just want to mention, at our last meeting, we approved recommending to the trustees the selection of H2M and Cameron Engineering for the engineering services related to the map and plan for the proposed sewer district in the village center. And Fale Fritz for the legal services to file the map and plan. We just want to mention that we have now officially sent that recommendation to the trustees, and they will be considering it at their next regular meeting. And then both H2M and Cameron and Fale Fritz will start their work. We've also asked them, and they will be looking at to what extent the work they do does or does not impact on Lake Agawam, and what they would, anything they would recommend we do additionally to address the issues in Lake Agawam. So, that's, so we should be started, hopefully, next month on that. So, tonight, we have been asked by the trustees to begin to look at some of the issues that have recently emerged regarding the residential districts in the village zoning code. And those have to do primarily with building height and some of the parking regulations and their impact on the residential districts. And this is something that I think we're going to want to do very quickly, because as we know, the trustees are considering tonight a moratorium while that's being studied. So, in the context of, we know that creates difficulties, we want to make sure this happens as fast as we can get it done. So, I just want to sort of talk out sort of how these issues have emerged, and then we can talk about them and what we want to study going forward. So, I take them each in sort of what the code says, and then what's occurring. So, we did a revision, a fairly comprehensive revision of the residential building codes in the R7, R12 and a half, and R20 zoning districts about seven, eight years ago, I think.
Two thousand nine.
Two thousand, right, right, two thousand nine it was finished. So, and what that did was move the village to a system where in the smaller districts, we use size of lot as the basic way to govern the design of houses. And we also, for the first time, used the pyramid law, so that houses would be developed more similar to the way houses historically had been developed in the village. So, the village certainly had had a history where there were taller houses, but historically those taller houses would set back as you go up. And so, the intent of the pyramid law was to try to ensure going forward that, to the extent we were trying to replicate the mode of the way houses historically had, houses in the village had historically been built, understanding the economics of building obviously have changed the last hundred years, this would cause them to be built similar to the mode of existing houses. And on the whole, I think we feel fairly good about what's happened, and certainly better than what was being built before that zoning. Several issues have come up in the last five years, as that's been applied, and particularly in the last two years, I would say, as the economy's improved and the pace of building has increased again. And two of the issues, I think, that have come up is, one is height. And that was an issue that we talked a lot about, and we made a decision back in 2009 that there had historically been in the village a number of two and a half and three-story houses, and that we would continue to permit those under certain circumstances. I think a few things have happened since. One is that basically, and I think this is just having to do probably with the economy more than anything else, every person who has gone to build a house has maxed out the entire envelope. So, rather than being a case where the zoning provides a guidance, and some reach it and some don't, everyone is maxing out the envelope. Secondly, so I think as we look at the zoning, we're going to have to assume that everyone will use whatever height they are legally permitted to do. Number two, in the zones that we had decided in 2009 we didn't need to look at, which was the R80 and the R120 zones. After Hurricane Sandy, FEMA significantly changed the height at which you're required to start habitable space. So, that is now as high as 15 feet.
From sea level, right?
From sea level, right. So, what you potentially get now is 15 feet plus 35?
Question is, there's two.
Plus two, in some cases.
Is it 15 feet from sea level at a certain distance? That is, if you go more inland, it's not?
It depends on the flood zone, yes. Yes, you're right. So, in certain flood zones, it would be that, as you go back, the flood zones change and the height is less. You're absolutely right.
But the two feet is the New York State pre-board. They add, so it's 15.
Right.
At the highest, it's 15 plus two feet for New York State.
Right, right, which is how the two feet started originally, which we'll get to in a second.
Right.
So, the other thing that's now happened is that FEMA's increased the height, and so you're getting houses that are higher than, I think, we had anticipated at the time, put it that way. Then on top of that, I think we understand more now than we, or at least to speak on a personal basis, at least I personally understand better now than I did back in 2009, how the height is actually is carried out in building applet cases of the village. So, my understanding, and I think one of the things we might want to do as we move forward, is have the building inspector and the villagers' lawyer come to our meeting so we can talk about and understand what's going on. But in a preliminary sense, I think my understanding is the two feet that's allowed in the code in certain circumstances has been applied virtually across the board. So, what's been happening is you have average grade, then you have two feet, then you have the height. And that's, whether that's right or wrong, I'm not opining on anything at this point, that's not, I think, how we understood it at the time. So, those are issues that have come to the trustees, there's obviously been a lot of public discussion about them, and the trustees have asked us to look at those and see how to deal with those going forward. And we'll talk for a minute about what the various tools might be, or what we want to look at. The second thing that's become clear, and again, not something we really talked a lot about at the time, but one of the things I think that at least some of us in 2009 thought would be a natural limit on size, was that the code requires a certain number of parking spots per bedroom. And, you know, you would have thought, or I thought certainly, I can speak for myself, that that was naturally going to limit the size of a house. So, if you had a house in a small lot, and you couldn't fit many parking spots on it, and we did a lot of reform in 2009 of the zoning code to control how you could build a driveway and where it would be placed, and how wide it would be, so we really tried to clean that up as best we could. What we did not, well, at least, I speak for myself, what I did not totally understand at the time was that the way it would be interpreted was that you would count parking spots along the driveway. So, if you had a driveway that was long enough to accommodate three spots, you would count three spots. The problem in practice is that people don't park that way, because no one's going to pull cars out every time they have to get out. That's why tandem parking is so difficult in all American cities, because people don't generally act that way. So, what's happening, and it's creating issues on a lot of village streets, is that is two things. Number one is the parking is not, is clearly not acting as a limit on size, that's clear, because you can get basically almost as many spots as you want. But secondly, you're getting on those streets, which you historically did not have in the village, those streets are full of cars. So, if you go down Post Lane, Lewis Street, Little Plains, Halsey Street.
Any of them.
Any of them, we could go Woolley Street, we could go on and on. They're all now lined with cars, because there is actually no one's, no one uses their driveway in the matter it's being interpreted. Unless we double the police department, so they're giving tickets every day, you can't manage that. And it's hard for them to know, is that car there for an hour, is it there for six hours, unless you start to mark? That's an enormous job to try to regulate. So, that's the second issue we've been allowed, sorry, we've been asked to take a look at. So, those are the two issues, and I think, you know, we want to talk a little bit tonight about how we might study them, what, you know, one of the things I think we're going to need is an architect to help us start to draw whatever ideas we have, and see if they actually play out the way that we want them to, which is what we did back in 2009. Obviously, at the time, CMAC was chair of the board, and that helped a lot. So, we were able to look at things and see, did they play out the way we thought? But I think that's one of the tools we're going to need. And as I said, I think we're going to want to consult with the villagers' lawyer and with the building inspector, understand how things are. I think one thing I would say personally I take as a lesson of this is, you know, zoning is in two parts. It's creating the right model, but it's also in making sure that you're covering how it's being applied. I think we did a pretty good job of creating the right model, I'm not sure we covered in every case how it was being applied. So, with that, I'll throw it open first to our comments, and certainly comments from the audience.
Just a question about the cars parking on the street. Maybe I'm kind of oblivious, but is this according to you a problem year-round, or only in the summertime?
I think it gets, you know, obviously, it's worse in the summer, because, you know, many of our houses are second homes, and so people are more likely to be there in the summer. But I certainly can tell you, certainly on many of the streets, I certainly would say, for example, on Woolley Street, there are cars parked on the street year-round now. Because even if it's a local person who's living there 12 months a year, 365 days a year, if they have four bedrooms in their house, and they have, and all they have is a long driveway, and that driveway can only fit maybe one car in the garage and one in the driveway, there's inevitably going to be two on the street. So, there's no doubt that, and this is, and the problem's growing. So, you know, what was somewhat of a problem is now, and I've seen it certainly Little Plains now, where you've had a number of smaller houses replaced with bigger houses, none of them have the parking, in a natural sense, I would say, that would accommodate the number of bedrooms. So, there's one being sold down Little Plains that's seven bedrooms. Every time I look at it, I read the ad and think, I must have misread the ad, right? And it maybe has spots in reality for two cars. So, let's assume not everyone has a car, some people have kids, but it's hard to believe that that house is not going to result in street parking, right? It's just hard to believe that at the end of the day.
It's allowed to have six cars.
Or five cars, or four cars even. Let's say there are four dogs in that car.
It's allowed to have six cars.
Right. So, the reality is going to be that that house is going to cause parking in the street. There's no alternative, in reality, as opposed to theory, because the theory that people will park and stack up, I've yet to see happen. So, again, those are the issues we've been asked to look at, and see what the proper way is to address them, or not, as the case may be. But I think, you know, the reason, one of the reasons I'm bringing up tonight is, I think under the circumstances of a potential moratorium, we're going to want to work as quickly as we can to get something back, so that, you know, this doesn't have too much of an impact on people, so.
Does this mean that parking areas now have to be part of a plot plan, or?
They are. So, when you apply to the building, you know, apply to the building department, you want to build a house, you have to show your parking, that's part of what you have to show.
Okay. And that's approved, as well as the structure and everything?
Correct.
Approved by who?
The building inspector. So, the building inspector counts and says, but what's happens over time, you know, we're a small village, so what happens over time, and there's a small number of people who practice here, architects and lawyers, so pretty quickly you learn, you know, that's what, if I hire an architect, I want that architect, or that lawyer, to know how the village interprets the code. So, very quickly, the architect lawyer knows how the village interprets the code, and that person knows, okay, if I have this long, dry driveway, this is how I count. And so, what they submit, I think, basically falls into quotes with what's being approved. And there's nothing in the code that prohibits that from being done, or there's nothing in the code that says you can't count that way, I don't think. I mean, I, again, I want to speak only for myself. I had no idea at the time that that was being done, or would be done. So, you know, I just assumed, if you had a driveway and you could park one or two cars, that's, that would be a real, that would control what happened, and that's not what's happening.
Well, my experience.
From what I understand. Again, I think we want to bring in the, you know, as much evidence and information so we can find out what's really happening.
Well, my experience has been that when it is questioned about parking spaces versus bedrooms, that a plan will include a parking plan, but whether that parking plan is actually implemented is, in my experience, negative.
Well, if it's submitted and it's approved, then there should be a way to assure that it's also implemented.
Right, right.
And, I mean, the code does allow for ways to have sufficient parking. It says accessory off-street parking areas may be located in required front, side, or rear yard, so it doesn't have to be just a driveway.
No, it doesn't.
Provided that they are set back at least 10 feet from all property lines. So, there is possibilities of creating parking.
And there also has to be screenage if it's in the front.
And the front has to be screened.
Right, right, right. But we, you know, one of the things we did in the reform in 2009 is we put more restrictions on how you could place driveways, because we wanted them basically on the side of the lot, sort of the way historically had been done in Southampton.
This has been changed recently.
Right, correct.
To allow also in the front.
Right, right, correct.
So, you can have like a circuit-type driveway, so cars can go in and out.
Yeah, and actually, most of what's going on now, which is great, I think actually better, is people doing parking courts rather than circuit driveways in most cases.
Like what I have.
Right, right. So, those, you know, that normally, that parking court would allow two spots. So, let me just do a house on my street, because I know what happened. You have a parking court in front, and then you have a very long drive to a driveway back to a garage that's many miles away. So, the count, I believe, for that house, which has many, many bedrooms, was two in the front, three or four on the side, a car in the garage.
And they count that as a space, by the way.
So, but again, the problem is, no one actually parks that way. So, the two in the front get used.
Right.
I don't think I've ever actually seen a car in the driveway. And we have this funny thing in Southampton where people actually, you know, like to leave their garage, and no one seems to, seriously, no one seems to actually use their garage for the car, they seem to use it for.
But it's counted as a space.
It's counted as space, but every town does that. But the net impact of all this, again, is you get a lot of street parking, and you get houses with many, many bedrooms on small lots, because the parking's not restricted.
So, my question was, in new construction, you have to be 10 feet off of the side lot line?
Correct.
Is that all zones, or is that just larger zones?
All zones, yeah.
But if you have a pre-existing condition, you can?
Correct, 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 correct. A lot of houses here, because they were built in former farm fields, or where there was a barn, or a stable, or whatever, you have things that were right up against the edge.
Well, the driveway, the driveway can be right, it doesn't have to be 10 feet off. The driveway can be at the property line.
It can be.
The garage cannot.
The garage cannot.
But the driveway can.
Yeah.
I see, okay, thanks for that.
Paul, I'm not sure, but I think the town has something in their building code saying that if you have so many bedrooms, you need to provide so many parking spaces.
Right.
And I'm not 100% sure, but I think the town does have something in their code.
They do. And we actually have the same.
We do too.
And I actually checked that.
Right, right.
We're actually consistent with the town, in terms of the requirement. It's two off-street spaces per residence, plus one for each bedroom over three.
Right.
And that's consistent with other codes.
Right. I don't think it's necessarily, you know, at least from what I'm reading, and that's something we need to study, is it's not an issue that the count is wrong, it's an issue that the way the count's being applied would have, I think, and again, this is something we have to find out, almost inevitably would have to result in on-street, in off-street, people parking on the street, because people don't actually line up their cars that way.
The other thing I was thinking about is, with the small lots, we have to change that pyramid law, and not go, I think we go five feet up, and then 45-degree angle, that's going to be dropped down the property line, then 45-degree up, to reduce the mass of the buildings. So, you cut down the number of bedrooms being created.
Right.
You're going to have a lot of flat houses.
I think that here, I think the definition of a parking space, that's what we need to define.
Right, right.
It has to be a real parking space that you can come in and out.
Without having to move another car.
Right.
Right.
See, right now, if you have a driveway, you're saying, well, I can park four cars in that driveway, but in fact, you can't really.
No, you can't.
It's not valid parking.
And I have a question. If you have a pool house, or if you have an extra building, is that pool house considered a bedroom?
No.
Even though people sleep there?
Well, that's a regulation issue, but I mean, you can't, you know, those pool houses are not permitted to have all the accoutrements, they're not allowed to have heat, for example.
They're not allowed to have beds.
That's right, but they're not allowed to have things like heat, so the theory is you can't.
Same thing in garage, you can't have a UTE garage.
Right. I think one thing will have to be a little bit.
What about, what about living space over a garage? Is that considered a bedroom?
Yes.
If, yeah, if it's actual living space, yeah.
You can't, you can't have, it's not allowed.
Yeah, no, if it's a CVO.
There are some pre-existing.
Pre-existing buildings.
Yeah, yeah.
But you can't build.
If it's a pre-existing building, it's counted.
Right.
So, I think what we're going to have to be a little careful about is things where there are regulations being correct, and the village is not, for one reason or the other, they're not being applied, in which case we might recommend to the trustees, they increase enforcement, but that's not a zoning issue as such. That's not our issue.
No.
That's not what we do. Versus a case where the interpretation of the zoning has led to the building in a different way than we contemplate.
Well, and that parking designs, obviously, the way that they are now are not, are not the way people live.
Right.
Parking designs need to be altered in some way.
Right, to reflect the way people live.
To reflect the way people live and drive.
I mean, the two things that have happened, obviously, is, one is, you're getting, is virtually every new house is building as many bedrooms as they can, because they perceive that as a value issue, even if they're not putting anyone in them.
Yeah, in bedrooms.
Right? Yeah, I mean, so people perceive it's going to increase their sale value, so they're putting in every bedroom they can. And then, secondly, people have more cars than they used to. So, you know, a two-person household now has two or three cars, where maybe 30 years ago, a two-person household had one car, and a four-person household had one car, and now they have four, three cars, or four cars. So, you just naturally have, you know, maybe in theory, you could have put those many parking spots on the site, but no one was really using them anyway, so it wasn't.
It wasn't an issue.
It wasn't having the impact it's been having recently.
So, let's maybe redefine the parking space.
So, I think one thing we want to do is, so I'm thinking that maybe the next meeting, we ask the building inspector, the villagers' lawyer to come, and we understand more about how, what's actually being applied, and how things actually work, because I think that's going to be important to.
I think that's a good idea.
Right, clearing up myth versus what's really going on.
And the building inspector can also explain why he's interpreting.
Right, why he's interpreting that way. You know, it made, for example, in the FEMA case, strictly applying, I mean, just to say the obvious, strictly applying the grade plus two feet and 35 feet in a case where the FEMA's making you build 15 feet above grade, is not going to work, right? And we know that. So, we have a circumstance where the zoning doesn't match the reality, so we're going to have to change it, putting aside whatever the building inspector's doing, we would have to change that, because it doesn't reflect now where things are, which is, you're may being required to. So, in that lot, in theory, if you applied our zoning in its strictest way, you would say you only get 20 feet. I don't think any of us would contemplate that happening in those zones.
Right.
Right? Because if a ground floor is 12 feet in those zones, and you get another aid, you're basically saying no house in that zone would be more than two flat stories, and no one's going to, that's not going to happen.
But are they building on?
They're not going to buy the lots anymore.
Right, right.
Property values, they're going to plummet, and we don't have money for the schools.
Are they building up pillars, or are they?
Yeah, generally, when people are building piles, or beams, or whatever, they're building a framework, and they're building on top of that, because the theory, now, to some extent, FEMA lets you close that in, but the theory is that.
You can't.
Well, it depends.
It's breakaway construction.
Yeah, exactly.
Yes, I know, it has to have doors, so water goes through or goes through.
The theory is the water will push the door open, and it will flood it, and if it floods it, it doesn't matter, because it's not inhabited. So, what FEMA has done in all flood zones is say.
Right, but people, you still.
You can't, you can't habitate that space.
But they do.
Well, again, I think generally, you're going to find, those are houses that were built before, that, I think that's actually pretty strictly enforced.
So, you don't have to fill up to 15 feet?
No.
You just have to build.
I mean, most of them.
You don't have to fill them, you fill up, but because you have to raise the septic system also.
Right, right.
So, normally, where you fill, that's where you put the septic system, the new septic system.
Right, right.
But there's going to be, we haven't had that many house lifting projects, but there's going to be more and more.
But just to use an example, what happened, and it may or may not be a good example for us, but on further east on Middle Lane, further west on Middle Lane, I'm sorry, you know, on the base side, there were, you know, this was a big issue, and there was very specific regulations put in for that area.
Yeah.
That allowed, you know, what I think are a number of really fairly attractive houses built higher up, but with, you know, with a lot of restrictions, how they built. So, in that case, I think what's happened a little bit in that case, everyone dealt with it, and did something about it. The problem on the rest of the flood zoning area now is, the R code and the flood zone don't necessarily match. So, the question is whether that's solved by applying the pyramid law, whether it's solved by trying to differ what happens with height in those zones. I don't know what the answer is.
Well, certainly could be a common issue of things, yes.
I think we should get a zoning map for the lots and.
And the floods map.
A flood map and the dimensions, so that we can start figuring out.
Yeah.
You'd almost want to create separate zones.
Yes, you have to.
If you're in this particular flood zone, then you'd be allowed to raise it whatever FEMA requires, 12 or 13 feet.
Unless we create a formula of some sort that can be applied across the country, which makes it a lot easier.
And I, you know, we should, this was just the beginning, and we should certainly, you know, check these, but I just looked at how the other towns and villages are dealing with this, and all, you know, basically, they're, East Hampton Town, East Hampton Village, and Sag Harbor are not giving any relief at all. They're saying you have to measure your height from the natural grade.
Yeah.
But then, I assume that they're giving variances.
No, 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 if you're in a flood zone, they give it.
They probably give it through a variance process, but the code doesn't address it.
The code doesn't address, but it's in, it's a federal law.
No, no, but that would mean, the way you would do it is, you would get a variance. That's the legal way you do it.
I think that they really, that we really.
Because, no, the federal law only applies to what, that you have to build above a certain grade. The federal law doesn't affect the village's, or village or town's regulation of height.
But the idea is that also, you see, FEMA is actually, it's not a law per se, because what happens is that if you build below FEMA, you can't get insurance.
Right.
There's no.
They're not, buildings aren't being built below FEMA, they're just, they're just making, I think, there's a variance process.
Right, right. That's correct, so let me, yeah, so, let's use East Hampton as a good example. And I'm just saying this is the right thing, this is just what some of the people are doing. In that case, you're going through a variance process, because they're not giving you in the zoning any relief from the fact that you now would have a house that wouldn't, so you go and you get a variance, and that allows people to weigh in and do whatever they just want to do. In Sagaponic, they've done. In Sagaponic, they've done, which I don't think is a good model for us, because obviously that's based on, I think, basically a inventory of modern houses, which are very different, but in Sagaponic, what they're basically saying is, you get thirty-five feet, but you never can do more than forty feet above sea level. So that's an absolute, now, I'm not sure that really would relate to our village, where we have, you know, we have a history on Meadow Lane and Gin Lane of houses that are tall right on the ocean, so it's a really different circumstance in Sagaponic. But that was the way they dealt with it, is they used sea level and did from that.
How did the village of Westham, what's it, in Westham, what do they call that?
West Hampton Dunes?
West Hampton Dunes.
Yeah, I don't know.
I mean, I watch.
Then we'd just like to look at.
Yes, it would.
To see what they've done.
Right, right, that's a good point.
The town of Southampton passed something on May twenty-seventh, two thousand fourteen, specifically addressing the Sandy regulations, so I, you know, I haven't really studied this very carefully, but I've read some copies of it, just to look at and see how they dealt with it.
But, you know, what gets difficult here, I think, is, you know, so you have this history of tall houses along the ocean, and that's sort of basically what was built in almost every case. However, there's a difference between tall and tall, right? Tall at thirty-five and tall at fifty feet is really different in how it affects everything around it.
I mean, yeah, then that is no longer tall.
I think that eventually, those houses will be raised, will be lifted.
Yes.
Because unless you are above the FEMA line, you cannot get insurance.
Yes.
You cannot get insurance, you're gonna get a mortgage.
No.
And some people will wanna get mortgages, so they will lift those houses.
I have a question.
Or maybe when they're sold, they will.
Good example is that, is the house they just tore down on Meadow Lane. The one next to it had a beach house that was owned by Mrs. Condon, it was a block building, they tore it down.
Right.
And on the ARB board, they had to raise it to the federal requirements, and they brought fill and everything else, and they did a very nice job of landscaping, so you don't notice it.
Right.
And that's a good example that we should use.
That's one of the better examples, right. I agree with you, where it was raised, but you don't really, and the way it was designed, it's not.
Maybe part of the subu said that it's landscape.
It blends with the historic fabric of that area, and then all the modern houses were built on the west end of Meadow Lane.
Right, I mean, part of the problem for us is, from a zoning point of view, we can't, zoning can't enforce architecture. We can enforce setbacks and porches and things like that, but we can't address building style and zoning.
Has the flood zones, have the flood zones changed?
Yeah, significantly. That's the problem. So what really has happened is.
So I really think that we do need to, rather than do just permutations and setbacks and things, I think we do need to also address the fact of flood zone, because they change.
Right.
So that if you designate something in a flood zone, then you cover it for new flood zones, rather than just.
Well, in fact, our village code had never addressed flood zones.
Okay, well now, I know, now we have to.
From a height point of view, which is not something.
Well, we have to, we guess now.
We're gonna have a problem.
Right, we didn't have a problem, so it was never addressed. So now, we have an issue because the flood zones now are bigger, but they're also, the height has changed.
And they're gonna change again.
From zoning, can we require grading versus high rate?
Well, who knows? The point is, is that you're doing this for a lifetime, I mean.
Then the landscape changes.
You have to address flood zones.
And you're not having a house just sticking outside of you.
You can, absolutely.
So I think we should address flood zones as a zone.
Right.
And that's, which is what is interesting, you know, the language of this town, which was passed back in May, it says legislative intent on October twenty-ninth, two thousand twelve, a severe storm, Hurricane Sandy hit the town of Southampton, it specifically references that and the increase in FEMA levels, and that's the intent of this change, was to deal with the new.
So then that'll cross over as flood zones change, so that if you do designate.
Right, and one thing that's interesting, what they did, and I think something, you know, we're gonna talk about, is, you know, one way to deal with that is you start to talk about how the, again, you know, what we had done in our zoning back in two thousand nine was the pyramid, we didn't apply the pyramid law in the R-120 and R-80 zones, because it didn't seem to really apply. There's no reason for it. One answer may be in certain cases, that we could decide what those cases are, maybe the pyramid law comes into effect, so understanding that you're gonna have tall houses, if they have to set back, because otherwise, what you're gonna get is a, you know, potentially, what someone could do is a fifty-two-story-high house that is a complete box, where there's no pyramid law to pull it back.
I would say it'd be subject, based on the width of the lot.
Maybe something like that.
Well, I think that pyramid law should apply across the board.
I think you also gotta put in the size of the lot and the square footage of house you can put on that lot.
Yes, it does, if they're taking maximum square footage, it does.
And limit that square footage down, because you'll go more than thirty-five feet, you'll get a large lot.
Yeah, I mean, the problem is, in a normal three-acre lot, the pyramid law makes no sense.
Doesn't apply.
I mean, because the house is set in the middle of a lot, it's just.
But you just said that right now, that they're building to max, but you just said.
But the pyramid will allow you to go fifty feet, because you have a large lot.
Right.
Not if there's a height restriction.
Well, we have a height restriction.
Well, I mean, if max, if they are maximizing the square footage of the lots, okay, which they are.
Let me actually do a separation, because, and I apologize, because I think I confused issues.
Okay.
One issue is, in the smaller lots, people are building out, just the nature of the economy, where the world is.
What is smaller anyway?
In other words, the R-seven, R-twelve and a half, R-twenty lots.
Okay.
So mostly north of Hill Street, although a few south of Hill Street also. In those areas, you know, certainly what's happening is people are maximizing on levels. The pyramid law is helping, I would say, because it forces people to step back more than would otherwise. One of the issues that's happening in those lots, in those areas, is something we thought would act as almost a natural restriction, which is parking is not working that way. So that's one issue in the small lots. In the bigger lots, you know, maybe we can like have a look at it, I'm not sure there's a problem of, it's not that houses are getting bigger in the bigger lots, so much as, I think in the bigger lots, because the flood zone, you're now seeing, you know, houses that are gonna be much higher than anyone had contemplated before.
Because of the grade.
Because the grade. So, you know, if you had, if someone on the ocean would have pushed their house up five feet, because that's what FEMA was at the time, and so the thirty-five was forty, maybe you didn't notice it, you know, it's not, it's hard for the eye to see that difference.
So with the.
If it's now with fifteen feet, becomes fifty-one, it's pretty visible.
So then the pyramid law would apply there in the flood zone?
Maybe, maybe.
Yeah, maybe, okay, all right, why not?
The FEMA runs off of sea level.
Right.
Not the grade of the road.
Right, right.
Or the grade of the road.
Right.
So, I mean, so sometimes people think, well, the house is fifty-three feet tall, but it's fifty-three feet tall from.
From sea level.
Sea level, right, right.
And it could be forty-five feet tall, because of the ten-foot difference.
Right, right, right.
So, I think people, I don't know if you discussed that before, before I came into this.
No, but that's, that's an important clarification, because everybody's thinking fifteen feet from where the house is right now, not from sea level.
Not from grade level, it's from sea level.
So it may not be for service.
Depends.
And just as an example, if the house is under discussion, is that that was in a zone of nine foot from sea level, and that changed from nine foot to sixteen feet from sea level. And that's, you had that seven-foot difference, which is substantial in that area.
Right.
And then, from an insurance standpoint, they won't really want that additional two feet.
Right.
This is what the insurance companies want, so it's not sixteen feet, it's really eighteen feet from sea level.
Right. And then you're starting at thirty-five.
And then you, and then thirty-five.
That's what we started at thirty-five.
Right.
Well, the, it's the, at the highest zone, I think it's fifteen feet plus the two-foot New York State pre-ironment, right? And then.
I think it's sixteen.
John Pulsar brought the roadmap, is this property right here, the one there, is under discussion, is in that zone, I think it's a VE sixteen is what it is.
Sixteen.
That's working sixteen feet off of sea level. Grade of the road is about seven and a half feet.
Right.
And then I think natural grade on the property was an additional three or four feet there.
Right, 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 that's the other thing, so what happens in those lots is, again, this is historically what happened, so it's not totally crazy, but, you know, the lots on Meadow Lane, and particularly on Gin Lane, many of them, some are less on, although some on Gin, the same thing, you know, the grade is lower at the street and then goes up, and it always was, and the houses were almost always built at the highest point because people want ocean views. There's very few, there's one on Gin Lane that's actually in a hole, but mostly, I'm not sure that's what they intended originally.
The Dooms, the top of the Dooms.
Generally, someone's gonna wanna build to get as many rooms with views as they can, so that always happened, but now you're getting, because of all these things that have accumulated, you're getting extremely tall structures. So I think, you know, Laura's point is very important, I think one of the things we wanna look at as we do this is FEMA may change again, and so we wanna be careful about not tying it to where FEMA is today, rather than trying to see if we can come up with something that will work as FEMA changes, because if there's an even bigger storm, maybe that sixteen will become eighteen. I mean, it's hard to know, because I don't think anyone ever thought Sandy would happen and that FEMA would, you know, change so much. So I think we're gonna have to see if we can come up with, it would be better if we could come up with something that would fit as these things change.
Well, flex anyway.
Yeah, and also, it's applied even on Meadow Lane, the heights vary, the FEMA heights vary all over the place. It's not like it's consistent along the street.
Really, well, I know it's different on the Bayside from the Ocean Side.
Different on the Bayside, but, you know, even in parts of the estate section now, you're in the flood zone, you are always in the flood zone, but now you're, you know, even in those lots, you're gonna have to raise the house up.
Really?
So, you know, this is a problem that's gonna, as houses get built, we're gonna see more and more.
Although in the estate section, usually talking about bigger lots.
Right, so you don't feel it as much.
So even if they raise it, so what, you're never gonna see the house anywhere.
Right, right, right.
Because it's inside.
Or after a few years, you won't see the house, when the hedges grow.
Well, unless you start building really huge houses.
Right, right.
But I think you have to make accommodations for the smaller lots, because there are smaller lots.
That are also in the flood zone.
That are in the flood zone, and I think you also have to be careful that, particularly as you get higher.
Right.
The screening becomes less of an option.
Right.
Unless you're grading the properties that you're building in pylons.
But when you're on the oceanfront, and you now start to go up, there's nothing you can put on there.
That's true.
That's gonna grow to thirty-five feet.
On the Ocean Side?
On the Ocean Side.
I love looking at the houses on the Ocean Side.
Well, no, I mean, when I say the Ocean Side of the street, even on the front, they are, you're not gonna have elms and oaks that are gonna survive.
Although most of the houses are not right on the street, they're always set back a lot.
And that just increases the, that increases the visual height too.
And then as they go up, you know, they're gonna be much, they are gonna be more visible, because they're being raised. So I think landscaping becomes less of a tool to necessarily be able to block out a fifty-five-foot house.
And one thing I would agree with, someone said before, I apologize, about the other house on Meadow Lane.
Oh, the one on?
You did, yes. So, you know, there are actually some pretty good examples on Meadow Lane where people have built new houses, and they're big new houses, but they fit in much better, and maybe when we look at those, that can help us with the zoning, like, how do we get more of those? Because there is a house, I do think it's right next door to the one that's being discussed.
Yes, right next door to the one they tore down.
Right.
It was, originally, it was Mrs. Lawrence Condon's beach house, it was a block building. They tore it down and they built this brand-new building, and it's the first time on ARB board that we had to go with this height restriction with the FEMA requirements and have to, and address that problem.
And it's the Dean House, is that right?
Yeah, yeah.
I don't remember the name of the people, if they've landscaped it, you never even notice it.
Yeah, it's now.
You know, when you make that, you go.
Is it the first one, and then, is it the first house to the left of the?
Left.
To the left side, that's the Dean House, yeah.
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 And that goes up, believe it or not, that's, I think, somewhere in the mid to low forties.
Yeah, but it's interesting, the way it's done, you don't really feel it, and.
You don't see, you don't feel it, it just kinda like blends in with everything along the street.
And the question is, can we figure out what they did, and is there a zoning lesson for us in how to apply that?
But it was before this FEMA regulation.
Yeah, but even so, it is certainly a high house, and I swear, you're almost not aware it's there, which is a great case, obviously.
But it's still an old, an old address.
No, it was built.
Is it, is it?
Well, originally, the first house that Mrs. Condon ended up in the Meadow Club after the thirty-eight hurricane was sitting on a tennis court.
And how, how old is the new house?
The new one they built back in the, I would say.
Eight years?
Two thousand, maybe, eight years ago, eight, maybe eight, ten years ago.
No, it's not under the new FEMA regulations, but it is an interesting example of a house that.
Yeah, it's no instance.
Built pretty high.
It's on the Ocean Side.
Yes.
Well, the other ones, is the ones next to Coopers Beach, east of Coopers, they also had to be raised.
Right, right.
I think there's two or three of them.
Right.
One was Gerolitison there, and they tore that house down, they built a, another one there.
There's one old, there's one west of Cooper Road, on the Bayside.
On the Bayside, right, yeah, it's different, yeah.
You're also getting a funny condition when people fill, and then there's, you come to the lot line, and there's a recanting wall, and then like a dip.
Exactly.
And then the next guy does the same thing, so you have these troughs.
And that creates flood problems, because the water collects on the street because you have these walls.
And neighbors get kind of upset about that, yeah.
That's a good point.
But part of that, part of that is FEMA, but also part of it is the way our zoning works, that's something you're gonna wanna raise the grade, right? So that's why I think we need to sort of deal with, okay, how do we count these things?
Well, very long-term, eventually Middle Lane is going to have to be erased.
I presume so, right.
The road.
The road itself, long-term.
Right. Otherwise, we just won't have a road, we'll go by boat.
Right, safety reasons.
Nice of that.
Which means then the houses are going to be too low.
Exactly.
You're on the second floor, you see cars coming by.
Right, right. Right. So, other comments?
Just, just reiterating the fact of West Hampton Dunes.
Yeah, West Hampton Dunes.
West Hampton Dunes might be a good, just a comparison or see what they have done.
Yeah, the funny thing about that though is like virtually every house got wiped out.
I know.
So they created a completely new context. I mean, one of the things that's difficult for us, I think, in looking at it from a zoning point of view is part of what we're trying to do is match existing context to the extent we can. I mean, sometimes it's not possible, but it would be nice that the new has them in a lane add to and are sympathetic to the existing context, not to create a whole new existing context. Right?
Well, I, I understand what you're saying, but as you said, you know, we don't, zoning doesn't address architecture, it just, it doesn't.
Right, right.
But I think we should superimpose the flood map.
Yeah, it's a great idea.
Over the zoning map, yes.
Right, right. So I think, Eldon, this is very helpful, looking at what certainly other people have done. I think we should superimpose the flood zone, understand from the building inspector and the village attorney how the code is now being interpreted certainly. And then I think we're going to, you know, ask for some architectural help so that we can look at this and sort of, as we begin to think of things, one thing I thought was very helpful last time is we could draw it and see, you know, you think it's going to help, but sometimes when you see the drawing, you realize it doesn't work.
I can draw it too.
Right, great, great.
See if I can help you out.
Yeah, that's great. So we can take a look and sort of.
I think it'd be interesting if, if they're interested to maybe get some of the homeowners that are on Middle Lane to get their.
Sure.
opinion, their, taking it out, how, what, how they feel about it.
Yeah, sure.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, yeah.
Because maybe they'll come and say, we want the houses to be high, we love them like that.
Also, you may want to check with some builders down in, like East Hampton. I see right next to the Maidstone, literally even above that club, there is a brand-new shingled house that's going up. And it actually does not have a flat roof. And they've somehow fit that in there, it looks like it's a two-story house.
Is this to the east?
To the west.
To the west.
Yeah.
So that has to be like highway behind the pond, right?
Yes.